Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Smithtown Planning Board is now in session. Barbara, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda this evening, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Under Part One, Item One, number 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge. Item Two, 2012-04, Storybrooke Homes. Item Three, 2012-02, Carlson Associates. Item Four, 2009, FB4 Realty. Item Five, 773 Scholar Estates. Item Six, 288 Olivia Estates. Under Part Two, Item Seven, 2010-06, KVC Holdings. Item Eight, Case Number 911A, Glen Hill Northern. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Is there anybody here that wants to speak on the items to be adjourned? There are none of motion.
Motion to adjourn the matters that were just read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item Nine, is a Performance Bond Extension, number 1133A, Oakwood Valley Estates. The applicant requests a retroactive two-year extension of the performance bond to expire on September 23rd, 2014, in order to obtain more time to complete construction and all necessary improvements for the subdivision known as Oakwood Valley Estates, 1133A. The map of Oakwood Valley Estates received conditional final approval from the Planning Board on November 4th, 2009, as application 1133. This application was approved for a two-lot subdivision on a .94 acre lot fronting on Alexander Avenue. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $36,305 was approved by the Board and subsequently assigned by the Chairman. The applicant submitted the bond and monies, all related materials to the town, and the Town Board accepted the performance bond on September 23rd, 2010. Due to a problem with the right-of-way, the map was never filed and the conditional final approval of application 1133 expired. The map was resubmitted on December 1st, 2010, as 1133A, which received conditional approval on February 16th, 2011. However, the original performance bond remained in place. Planning Board approval for this performance bond expired on September 23rd, 2012. The applicant indicated that they were delayed in starting construction due to difficult economic times in the realty market, but they are now ready to move forward. The applicant submitted a bond extension application to the Planning Department on April 17th, 2013, at which time the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request and have determined that the bond amount is sufficient to cover all remaining improvements. The traffic safety department has no comment. Planning has performed an onsite inspection of the subdivision and determined that construction has not yet begun on the necessary improvements or the one proposed dwelling. The Planning Department has no objection to the applicant's request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Oakwood Valley Estates, 1133A, for the period of two years to expire on September 23rd, 2014.
Thank you. Is there anybody here representing the applicant? Would you come to the microphone and give your name and address, please? The affidavit of posting.
My name is Sal Ciccarelli. I'm representing Inspired Design Group, architecture firm. Our address is 1650 Sycamore Avenue, Suite 19 in Bohemia, 11716. I'm here to request an extension to the subdivision performance bond for Oakwood Valley Estates. Reason being, at the start of the project, was delayed due to a decline in the real estate market, and however, the client has decided to move forward with construction, and while plans were being reviewed for permits, they also noticed that the bond had expired. So for this reason, we are respectfully asking for the extension of the performance bond. Thank you.
Is there anyone here which is to speak on this application? Members of the Board, any question? A motion for the extension of the performance bond.
Motion to approve a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Oakwood Valley Estates, number 1133A, for a period of two years to expire on September 23rd, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item 10, is the request of two applicants to waive a condition of approval in subdivision 1084, Xena Estates, and you have the maps attached to your memo. Two applicants are requesting waivers to remove or reduce Condition N of the final approval of Xena Estates, 1084, which required a 10-foot planting screen along the east property line of Lot 1, located in the rear yards of Lots 2 and 3. The preliminary map of Xena Estates, Case 1084, was heard before the Board on March 16th, 2005, and was adjourned. At that meeting, the Planning Board was unsatisfied with the variances requested, which were illustrated on the map, including a rear yard setback on Lot Number 1 from 50 feet to 23 feet. In order to create larger lots on Mildred Court, the developer was proposing the rear lot line of Lot 1, fronting on Alexander Avenue, to be 5 feet from an existing garage, 23 feet from an existing deck, and 35 feet from the existing home on Lot Number 1. This required a 17 percent variance for the garage, a 54 percent variance for the deck, and a 30 percent variance for the home. When Xena Estates was reheard before the Board on April 20th, 2005, this request was unchanged. However, a 10-foot wide planting screen was proposed to compensate for the significant rear yard variance request. The Planning Board originally approved this application on November 16th, 2005. Condition N of the final approval states, because of the rear yard variance on Lot Number 1, 163-foot by 10-foot planting screen shall consist of 46 evergreens, 6 to 8 feet high, shall be provided along the east property line of Lot Number 1, as indicated on the performance bond estimate dated October 21st, 2005. The planting screen follows the rear fence of Lots 2 and 3 of Xena Estates. The screen is 89 and 1/2 feet long in Lot Number 2, and 73.43 feet long in Lot Number 3. On April 22nd, 2013, Anthony and Jennifer Intantoli residing at Lot Number 2, and Richard and Eva Rizzi residing at Lot Number 3, both submitted applications to the Planning Department to remove or reduce the condition, at which time the applications were distributed for review. Mr. and Mrs. Intantoli indicated they have installed a fence along the property and would like to place a 10-foot by 14-foot outdoor utility shed within the planting screen and move their children's swing set closer to the rear fence. Mr. and Mrs. Rizzi indicated they have also installed a fence and would like to put a swing set or shed in the planting screen. The engineering and highway departments have indicated the planting screen is not within their jurisdiction, and the traffic safety department has no comment. Previous subdivisions approved by the Board between Alexander Avenue and Mildred Court in 1983, 1994, and 2003 created smaller lots on the west side of Mildred Court in order to maintain the 50-foot rear yard setback on the east side of Alexander Avenue. As a result of the rear yard variance in Xena Estates, Lots 2 and 3 currently have approximately 80-foot and 110-foot deep rear yards, which are 60 percent and 120 percent deeper respectively than their neighbors in older subdivisions on the west side of Mildred Court. Many of these homes with 50-foot deep rear yards do have sheds and swing sets in addition to in-ground swimming pools. A shed and a swing set could be reasonably accommodated in a deeper rear yard without removing the planting screen. The Planning Department has conducted an onsite inspection and found that the conditions have not changed, which made the rear yard variance on Lot Number 1 undesirable in 2005. Removal of the planting screen would remove the only condition that compensated for the significant rear yard variance of Lot Number 1, being reduced from 50 feet to 23 feet from the existing deck. This planting screen provides additional privacy to Lot Number 1, where the back of the house is 35 feet from the applicant's properties. Due to this variance, Lot Number 1 has the smallest rear yard setback in the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, the Planning Department objects to the applicant's request to remove the planting screen insofar as this screen mitigates the only substandard rear yard setback in the surrounding neighborhood and provides additional privacy to the undersized lot. The Planning Department recommends that the planting screen remain undisturbed. However, the Planning Board may consider modifying the Condition N to reduce the planting screen. The Planning Department recommends that this request be the subject of an onsite inspection by the Board. However, if the Board wishes to act this evening, the Planning Department offers the following resolutions for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby denies the request of Anthony and Jennifer Intantoli to waive the condition of a 10-foot planting screen along the east property line of Lot Number 1 in Lot Number 2 of the subdivision known as Xena Estates, 1084, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board hereby denies the request of Richard and Eva Rizzi to waive the condition of a 10-foot planting screen along the east property line of Lot Number 1 in Lot Number 3 of the subdivision known as Xena Estates, number 1084.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant? Would you come one at a time to the microphone and give your name and address? Well, I would suggest coming one at a time there. That way, you can put each person there probably has their own presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Anthony Intantoli. I reside at 43 Mildred Court in Niskent, and I come to you with an application for a request to remove the 10-foot planting screen that has been placed in the rear yard of my property. My property, I purchased, I moved into my property in 2009. I bought the property and the home from builder Frank Coridley. At the time that I purchased the home and signed the contract, I was informed that there was a 10-foot planting screen placed in the back of the yard to allow for a buffer between the two properties, my property and Lot Number 1. I didn't understand exactly what that buffer was meant to do, but in any event, there was a 10-foot buffer there that I was told that required natural plantings or vegetation within 10 feet. I moved into the property, and eventually, within one or two years, I placed a fence, a 6-foot PVC fence along the entire property line from the left side, the right side, and the back. I feel that a 6-foot fence gives enough privacy to both myself and my neighbor behind me. I am restricted in what I can do within the 10-feet buffer in the back of my yard. My children, I have two small children, I have a dog, and I think that I should have the opportunity to utilize my property as I want to with my children. I'd like to move my swing set further back. I'd like to place a shed, the size of which would accommodate the shed for that zoning within the specific area of 2 to 3 feet from the property line, so I can utilize my shed for personal things and other things that I need. I don't think that I should be restricted in removing the 10-foot buffer. I think that if the Planning Board has denied the request, I think there should be a reconsideration of perhaps making it smaller. I am not planning on removing any plantings that are currently there, and if I had to, because of the placement of the shed, I am willing to accommodate that with replacing with further plantings in that area. I've provided you photos of the back of the property, if you need to see that, and I'd like to hear what the Board has to say. Thank you.
Members of the Board, any questions for this?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
What is in the 10-foot area now?
May I approach the table?
Sure.
No, you gotta get it on the record.
Yeah, there's a record being made.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay, so what I'd like to show you here, number one, is the sign in the front of the house indicating that I did put the posting up.
Can we pass these down?
Absolutely. Here is the back of the property, where I'd like to put the shed. I would have to remove four or five of those arbivites to get the shed in there. This is the back of the property. What I'd like to show in this photo is the house behind me on Lot Number 1 is all the way off to the side, so if I put my shed, I would not cause any visual disturbance to my neighbor behind me.
The buffer that we're talking about is in front of the fence. Is that, is this the buffer we're talking about?
The buffer, yes, the buffer lies from the fence, 10 feet in, and here is another, is a better shot. I have plantings that were put in by the builder across the property line at 10 feet. So essentially, I cannot enter 10 feet of my rear yard.
The fence is 6 feet high?
Fence is 6 feet high, white PVC fence.
And the planting requirement was 6 to 8 feet?
No, 10 feet.
No, the planting, the height on the, height on the plantings?
The, according to the minutes that I reviewed from 2005, it said 6 to 8 feet in the plantings, yes.
Have you discussed your proposal with the property owner behind you?
I have. I have approached Mr. Minto behind me in Lot Number 1 and have mentioned to him that I would like to remove or even reduce the size of the planting screen, so he is aware. I approached him and placed the sign on his property as far as the posting, so he is aware. We had a nice discussion, and I think he's here to state his case as well.
Oh, he's here?
Oh, can we hear from him?
Yeah, I was wondering.
Come on up.
Are you finished?
Okay, sure. Actually, actually, I have one question. I see, I don't understand, and you can perhaps let me know, what is the real purpose of this buffer? I purchased the home with that property size. What Mr. Coridley did, the builder, at some point shifted the property line to accommodate a structure that was already in place on Mr. Minto's property. It's really not my issue. I purchased the property as is. The lot line, the back property line, was changed at some point prior to Mr. Minto purchasing property, Lot Number 1. That gave me a little warm room in my yard, and of course, gave him a little less room in his yard. And as you could see, there was a variance request by Mr. Frank Coridley in 2005 to reduce it from 50 feet to 23 feet. So if that was already established and known, what is the purpose of a 10-foot planting screen on my side of the property? I can certainly understand for privacy, some buffering, allow some tall vegetation so that we don't see each other. I totally understand that. But I have put in a 6-foot fence to my benefit, my neighbor's benefit, and I have purchased it. I didn't ask for any extra money from him. So I think if the Planning Board is gonna reconsider, if they do not want to remove the 10-foot buffer, I think at least reducing it would certainly be helpful to me, and I will be compliant with keeping persistent vegetation along the back line, 6 feet, 8 feet, whatever it takes to allow privacy between myself and my neighbor. I think that's very reasonable and fair.
So when you say reducing it, you mean reducing it by the width of it across the whole length of the property?
Across the whole length, yeah. I'm happy to keep vegetation there, and eventually, I'm gonna put a pool in, I'm gonna put a patio in, and I wanna keep vegetation back there because it would suit me well, as well as my neighbor, to ensure privacy for the both of us. So I'm not here to say I, I don't want the planting screen. If you like to reduce it, I'm happy with that. I will keep whatever foliage or plantings need to be there. I'd like to get my shed as close to the fence as possible, otherwise, I'm gonna have my shed sitting all the way up front, and I'd like to put it as back as possible. And I don't think that the shed would cause a problem to my neighbor. As I said, his home is all the way to the side. As you can see in the pictures, the shed would be all the way to the left, so it wouldn't be a visual eyesore for him at all. So I don't see why the request would be, would be denied.
Assuming we didn't-
We'll hear everybody-
Absolutely.
And then there, we'll, we'll make our recommendations, okay?
No problem.
I have a question before we go on. Assuming we didn't eliminate it entirely, what minimum reduction would be sufficient for your plans in your backyard?
I think if we, oops, I think if we look at plants or evergreens or, you know, arbivites, I think probably you would look at putting them within 2 to 3 feet of the property line, I would assume. Eventually, they would get big and sort of cover up the whole area. So I would be comfortable with having a 2 to 3-foot planting screen along the entire back of the property. I will keep vegetation there, I will keep plantings there, and I could at least get my shed from 10 feet down back to 8 feet, you know, back, back 8 feet, so within 2 to 3 feet of the property line, and behind that, I would keep vegetation.
What would you say is the width of the current plantings up against the fence from the photographs you showed us?
Oh, I would say 4 feet, perhaps?
So if we, if we lowered it down to 2 or 3 feet, you'd be willing to take out all those plantings and put in new plantings 2 or 3 feet?
Yeah, I'm planning eventually, when I put in a pool and redesign my backyard, I'm planning to do that, absolutely. And if you had to hold me to it, I'm okay with that, because I think I deserve privacy as my neighbor does, and I'm happy to put 12-foot arbivites to give him enough privacy, both for myself and himself.
Thank you. The other gentleman, you're at the neighbor, you're the other application? Okay, could you give your name and address? You're together, are you?
Yeah, we're together. How do you top that? I'm Rich Rizzi, this is my wife Eva. We're at 45 Mildred Court, right next door to the Intantolis. We had the house built like he did, and to be quite honest, when, when the builder told us, he mentioned to us, you have a planting screen in the back, we really didn't understand it or pay much attention to it. We were more concerned with the structure of a custom home. In any case, after we moved in in December of 2011, four months later, we, we cleaned up the yard, there were trees that had to come down, there were pine trees with needles droppings all over the place, there was dead brush in the back corner, we have pictures of what we did. But we took a lot of the debris and garbage out and put in some, well, the builder put in some trees, but we moved them across the back property line. We also put in a 6-foot vinyl fence. Now, it was my understanding that we, the reason we had to put, we had to have privacy, that's why the, the planting screen was supposed to be there, so we put a fence there to accommodate the planting screen. You know, again, like Anthony was asking, what's the real reason for the planting screen if we have a 6-foot privacy fence there? So that's, you know, that's why we're here. We're trying to eliminate the planting screen because we feel that we've done enough and put a fence in, and we'd like to utilize our property, which we pay taxes on, to the full extent, because we have three kids also. We wanna put a pool, we want, we wanna put a shed, and I don't think it's unreasonable. We have a 6-foot fence there for privacy. We have photos as well to show you.
Okay, good. Are these a repeat there pretty much of what his?
It's everything, it's everything the same. It's the same reason, that's why I don't wanna be redundant here, but-
Okay. Let's hear the other application, the other people here that wanna talk on this.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Could I ask them one question?
Go ahead, ask them a question.
You have a separate homeowner behind your property from his?
No.
It's all the same?
It's the same.
Okay, fine, all right, very good. Thank you.
I just wanna add one thing too also on here, and I have a picture of this, and, you know, we're so concerned with, with privacy and-
Get a little bit closer to the microphone.
Oh, okay. I know he's concerned with privacy. I mean, if, if you see the picture we have here, which is a large picture, he's got plenty of vegetation in his backyard to show privacy. I mean, you can't even see his house. We stare at this right here, which is actually his shed, which is pretty much on top of our property. So believe me, we want these trees to grow as fast and furious as they can, so we don't have to look at that. But there's plenty there, we have the privacy fence, we have all the trees. Again, not quite sure of the issue and why we can't enjoy our property and do what, you know, what we'd like, but thank you.
Donald King, 75, East Main Street, Kings Park, New York. I represent Bob Minto. I know that when this Board granted this subdivision, Coridley got a couple of large lots, and as a result of the small lot, the 35-foot rear yard and 23 feet to the deck, this Board, in its wisdom, decided on the buffer on the two adjacent properties. It was not to be intruded on, it was a treeed buffer, and you guys did it for a very good reason. Frank Derubias, the Planning Director, recommended not granting their application. My client wants to stick with the 10-foot buffer. One of the property owners in Lot 3, denuded part of the property, has planted some, some small trees there, and the fact that his property is vegetated has no bearing whatsoever on this 10-foot buffer that I'm sure you were on the Board then, Mr. Chairman, when this was granted, and there was a perfectly good reason because this lot was smaller, and therefore, they wanted this buffer to protect my client's lot. And he purchased this lot knowing that this buffer was there, and he does not want it to go away. And when they purchased their property, this was on a file map, and I'm sure they were represented by an attorney, if he, if he knew what he was doing, he would say that there's a buffer there that runs with the land, is recorded, and is going to remain. And I'd like to hand up some photos, if I may, of the neighbor's property. He's going to be greatly impacted. You heard about a pool, shed, and children, which is a fine thing, but they got extra land, he didn't, that he's vegetated, has no bearing whatsoever on this, and we want and will demand a 10-foot buffer, and in fact, the one that was denuded, I believe the Board should say to them, you only have nine trees, you're required to have 20 out of the 46 along this line, and we want you to put them in. If you don't do it, we wanna revoke your CO. You guys did this with a good reason, and buffers are not made to go away because somebody wants to utilize the property. This is to protect him, not to benefit them.
Mr. King, how would your client be prejudiced, and I haven't seen the property yet, but I'm just curious, how would he be prejudiced if, if we reduced the buffer as opposed to eliminate it?
But that was not the intent.
I understand, I'm just asking how he'd be prejudiced?
Because visibly, or visual, if I may hand up a photo of the neighbor's property.
Would you take the mic when you're speaking to us, please?
The first photo is Lot 3, I'm gonna hand it down to you, where the trees have been removed, and I think nine have been placed there. This is the same property. The third photo is, will show the impact of the open area that's been denuded. This is 10 feet, this is no big deal, and you guys want it even to suggest cutting it down, I can't, I can't even believe it. That's 10 feet. This was imposed by this Board for the purpose of protecting his lot, and it was not, if you can make an application and come back in after Coridley benefited for two larger lots and cut him down, that's not right. 10 feet is nothing, and he doesn't want it.
What I'm struggling with is, what's the difference if, if the trees, the screening trees are-
Well, I just think it's-
10 feet from the property line or 2 feet from the-
We basically have the same view, that the trees are 5 feet or 8 feet from the property line. from the property line.
Then why did you impose, why did this board impose this buffer? If you're even considering this, it's beyond my comprehension. The 10-foot, they're not impacted by this, they have larger lots as a result of Keridley getting five lots. And if you even consider it, it's beyond the pale for me. He wants 10 feet because there's going to be a pool, he doesn't want the visibility. You see that he can look right, you can look into this guy's property.
Okay, okay, so now you just made something a little clearer. Because if we reduce the buffer, now you're saying he's concerned that the pool and activity would be closer to his property line, is that-
Well, I don't know where it'll be. Certainly, if this board, I keep going back, planning recommended against removing it. This was done in 2005 for a very good reason, by that then-board, who was ever on it, I think the chairman was on it. My client financially feels that this will impact him because he has a small lot with a 35-foot from his house rear yard and 23 from the deck. He wants this vegetated planting. He doesn't want something two feet, four feet, or six feet. He wants what the board imposed. Thank you.
Is your client there, was he the owner of this lot at the time that these two lots were created?
My client, no, I don't believe so.
So he bought the property after this subdivision was done?
Knowing that the buffer was there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would wish to speak on this? Okay, you can come back up and-
Yeah, let me ask him a question.
I have a question.
Use the microphone so that we can hear what you say.
You know, what doesn't make sense to me is that, like I said, we weren't aware of all this. We bought, like Anthony said, a property. We realized, you know, that there was a concern with privacy, but everyone has a concern for privacy. No one wants to look in each other's yard, so we did the best that we can. Now, you saw the 10 feet, obviously, to put a shed 10 feet away from the fence, which is substantial, although, you know, we don't have any immediate plans right now to put the shed, but we want to be able to do what we want, when we would like to. As we mentioned, we had cut down, there were some dead trees back there when we first moved in, we did remove to put in and move live trees. Well, half hour after the tree removal company was there, our neighbor behind us called the town on us, and somebody showed up on my property saying that there was a complaint you're cutting down trees and you're removing this planting screen. Well, we were removing dead trees and we were replacing with live trees. But instead of him coming over to speak with us, he, you know, decides to file a formal complaint, and now we have to, you know, deal with all this. And as we all know, I need more than a half hour to remove dead trees and put in new trees. So he didn't even give us the opportunity or the respect, even give us enough time to replace it. For some reason, he acts like this is his property, this is my property. We pay a lot in taxes, we have a brand-new house, it's definitely not an eyesore. If you look at what we're, you know, that shed I showed you, it's a very large eyesore along with probably a 20-foot-high pile of wood that is on his property, that, you know, has mice and cats that live in that come over on our property. So, yeah, so like I said, you know, we've had issues with cats, we've had issues with mice, he's got a massive pile of wood that he, well, no, I'm just saying, we wanted the fence, we want our privacy, but enough's enough.
Okay, what you're looking at there is two photos from, one is the view from my patio, this is a view from my patio. Okay, you can see, you know, the attorney there is saying, you know, 10 feet is no big deal. If you stand at anybody's house, you stand in your backyard, 10 feet is a big deal. You want as much property as you can have to make use of it. You don't want to give up 10 feet if you don't have to, okay? So that's what this picture is just showing you, the distance of my yard, okay? This is his shed that I have to look at, okay? That's my eyesore.
That's on his property.
That's on his property, I have to look at a shed, okay? Okay, so anyway, so all the vegetation, all the trees behind, you see all the trees there, okay? You see all the trees there. And this picture here, all this brush here is, his house is behind it. So I don't know what the complaint is about having to plant shrubbery on my property for more, to block more of the property. Because all these trees here are on his property already. So there's plenty of a buffer there, so I don't really know what the argument is here. For something to happen in 2005, of course, things change, like, you know, the lawyer saying, oh, it happened in 2005, why'd you approve it? Well, things change, you know, life changes, things change. Just because you made a decision there doesn't mean you have to keep it.
Do you know how high these trees are expected to grow?
I don't really know. I mean, they grew probably about six inches over the past year.
Doesn't look like much of a buffer.
And looks like it's very close to the fence.
They're about two feet.
Two feet, it's like about two feet. You want to see these? Well, what he's supposed to, what he's, what the gentleman that owns the property there adjoining there is just saying that they were supposed to plant more of those, not less of them. How many were supposed to be planted? 46 evergreens. If you had 46 evergreens, there might be a little bit more of a buffer.
That's exactly what the builder planted. If that's something he should have taken care of, I don't know. And the other thing is, that shed is actually where he was standing to take pictures of my backyard. That's the only way he can get a view of my backyard, was by standing on his shed. We tried to get a picture of it, but it was blurry.
You and Mr. Intantoli indicated a desire to put a pool in your yard.
Eventually.
Eventually.
So you haven't spoken to a contractor yet?
No.
Because what I'm wondering is, if we left the 10-foot setback in place or the 10-foot buffer, would you still be able to get a pool in? And it looks to me like you would, it might be narrow, but it looks to me like you would be able to get a pool in.
Sure, pools are all different sizes.
Agree, agree.
You'd definitely get a pool in there.
Can you guys step back?
Yeah, well, I- You know, the thing is, like I said, you know, we purchased the property at a certain size, we're paying a lot of taxes for this property, 10 feet of planting screen, why? Privacy, we'd all like to have privacy. I wouldn't like, I really don't want to stare at a shed, I really don't want to smell the smoke that comes out of his chimney that he burns all year long to heat his home. I really don't want to look at the 20-foot pile of chopped wood that can fill this whole area here. I don't want the cats from his yard, I don't want the rats from his yard, or the mice and everything else. But it is what it is, we're neighbors, we're not living upstate on four acres of property. Let's be realistic, I don't-
As we have-
I mean, he just seems like he's upset because-
We've got all of the information there, what we've got to do is sort out there what we, what our thoughts are on this, but we're going to have to do an onsite, I can see that right now, which is a recommendation from the planning director. And Mr. King, do you wish they had to rebut anything there that they have?
I just want to say, thank you for your consideration, and I understand you have to really think about it, but, you know, the buffer is there, the privacy is there, you know, whether it has to be 10 feet, five feet, three feet, really, you know, to me, it's just, to me, the argument here is just because it was, you made a decision in 2005, you have to keep it, that's the wrong argument. You really need to look at the big picture and, you know, how to create, you know, a happy family all around. I mean, the privacy is already there, you can see from the pictures.
Well, I think it's been said, it's been recommended that we do an onsite, and we're going to go out and look at it ourselves before we make any decision. I think that's where we're going with this.
That's fine.
Are we able to access this without having everybody home or somebody home to let us into the area? Is this accessible by street?
Well, we're home, so.
Well, you can get in, but I don't know if you-
I run from home, so.
There's somebody home all the time.
I run from home, you can come anytime.
What house number are you?
We're going to have to do an onsite, I can see that now.
45 Mildred.
45? Just an eyeballing the survey, your property is anywhere from 50% to 100% deeper than the property behind you. So in terms of the buffer, I could understand why the owner on the other side would want the buffer. I appreciate your point, but it's 95 feet on one side, 127 on the other. Your property is 253 feet in length on one side, yours on the shallow side is 189. It's anywhere from 50% to 100% deeper than that property. So I think the reason for the buffer, though I wasn't on the board at the time, might be because that parcel is shallow compared to yours.
I'm not sure.
In addition, in addition, sir, he bought his property with the understanding that this was in place, whereas when you all bought your properties, you were also of the understanding that this was, maybe you didn't pay attention to it or whatever, but I think that's also significant.
I think it is as well, but I don't think that, you know, asking for less than 10 foot is unreasonable.
Well, we'll take a look at it.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. King?
Excellent point, super point, because that was what Keridley got those two large lots for, and this small lot. This isn't about cats or rats or wood, let's stick with this buffer. When they purchased, it was there, it ran with the land, it was part of the title report, their lawyer, if he knew what he was doing, would tell them there was a buffer that it be continued. Frank Derubius wants it continued, and you guys or your predecessors put it in for one good, very good reason, and he wants it to remain. Super point.
Thank you.
With all due respect, Mr. Attorney, 10 feet is a lot. You understand that, Mr. Attorney?
Don't address me, address the board.
So I don't think it's unrealistic to reduce the planting screen. I'm not here to say we need to remove it. I appreciate the privacy for both sides, okay? There should be some compromise here. I'm paying taxes on that property, and I can't utilize that land the way I want. Maybe the board should consider reducing my taxes based on that 10 feet. You know, we don't have that power, sir.
We don't have the power to reduce your taxes.
First of all, we don't know definitively that that buffer makes your property significantly less valuable to begin with. We're talking about 10 feet, and you'd want to have it landscaped anyway.
Absolutely.
But we're not the assessment review board.
Gotcha.
See, what we have to do-
The person on Lot Number One purchased his property knowing that his property was much smaller than my property.
And you purchased your property knowing that-
Knowing it was much, much bigger, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate what the other gentleman said, I'm sorry, I don't see his name there. And I appreciate that. All I'm asking is for consideration of reduction, not removal, reduction so I can use my property, allow my children to use the property, and have the ability to put a shed within reason and not have it in the middle of my property. I welcome the board coming to the property, reviewing the property, but I will make one recommendation. There is someone that came to the property from the board, or, not from the board, from the town. A person who parks their vehicle in front of the home, gets out of the vehicle, and approaches the property without ringing the doorbell. My wife is home with two small children and sees an unusual individual approach the property and go near the rear of the property and enter into the rear of the property to evaluate something, but they had a town vehicle. I would ask the board, if possible, with all due respect, ring the doorbell and talk to the neighbor before you enter the property. I think it's reasonable. My wife doesn't know who's entering. My wife doesn't know if it was a stolen vehicle from the town, and we don't know who this individual is.
Every member of this board has an identification.
Sure.
And before they go on anybody's property, they should knock on the door and let the owner or whoever's there know why they're there, and they've got the identification to show why they're there.
I completely agree with you, this individual did not.
Yeah, we would not normally be traveling.
That was not us.
We wouldn't be traveling in a town vehicle. I came to your block, did not leave my car though, drove around both sides to see what we were dealing with, but did not get out of my car, but none of us would be traveling in a town vehicle.
I just wanted to share that because I think it's very important with safety around our town and our community. Because, you know, if I let my dog out, and my dog attacked that person, I'd be standing somewhere else. So I think we need to just keep that in mind, and I would appreciate that. Thank you.
This board, any member of this board that comes to your house has identification to show you who they are and why they're there, okay?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Members of the board, any other questions? A motion there for an onsite.
In the matter of Xena Estates, Number 1084, motion to adjourn for an onsite inspection.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. All right.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part III, Item 11, is a street tree waiver, 1092 Winston's Run. The applicant requests to waive the requirement of installing 26 street trees within the subdivision known as Winston's Run, Number 1092. The map of Winston's Run was granted conditional final approval from the planning board on May 3, 2006. This application was approved for a six-lot subdivision on a 3.69-acre parcel fronting on Old Nichols Road and a proposed cul-de-sac to be known as Darre Court, also known as Shara Court. At that time, the board approved a performance bond requiring that the applicant plant a total of 26 street trees within the subdivision. The performance bond indicated that existing healthy trees may be substituted for new street trees at the discretion of the planning department. The tree clearing and preservation plan proposed 19 new street trees on the planned cul-de-sac and the remaining seven on Old Nichols Road. The applicant is requesting a waiver of all 26 street trees. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the request, and the traffic safety department has no comment. The planning department performed an onsite inspection of the subdivision and determined that none of the 26 required street trees have been installed. While a few healthy trees have been saved, none are in the public right-of-way, and the subdivision contains far fewer trees than the existing neighborhoods around Old Nichols Road. Many of the proposed preserved trees in the tree clearing and preservation plan have since been cleared. Some existing vegetation has been preserved along Old Nichols Road. Based on the plan, existing site condition and obstacles, the planning department found that 14 street trees could be reasonably planted along Darre Court in the subdivision. The planning department would accept the existing healthy trees along Old Nichols Road in lieu of new street trees on Old Nichols Road. Therefore, the planning department objects to the applicant's request to waive the installation of all 26 street trees insofar that this is a standard design feature of all subdivisions within the town. The planning department recommends that this request be the subject of an onsite inspection by the board. However, if the board wishes to act this evening, the planning department offers the following resolutions for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby denies the request of Michael Weinreth Doing Business as Winston's Run at Wisconsin LLC to waive the requirement for the installation of 26 street trees in the subdivision known as Winston's Run, Number 1092.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, I'm Michael Weinreth, the principal of Winston's Run at Wisconsin. Yes, I already submitted it.
Where did they post it?
I posted it, I have a picture where it was posted. It was posted on a for-sale sign in front of the house, and I took the picture of it.
I was over there almost every day this week, and I could not see the sign.
Well, I will tell you this, Mr. Chairman, I was there on Tuesday, and I found that the sign had blown off, and I put it back up on Tuesday, and it was-
When was the photo taken, sir?
The day that we posted it.
When was this taken?
Right in front of the house.
No, when, when?
Oh, the day we posted it, on June 14.
Okay, all right, that should be enough. He gave testimony when it was posted.
Okay.
I was, we did take the picture.
The main thing is that the neighbors should know.
Well, I've spoken to all the neighbors, and they were aware of this, but I did my best, I did post it.
Well, you know, I've seen the property so that I know that there's no trees there, but the fact of the matter is that that's our responsibility, is to see whether there should be trees there or whether we can amend it. But we don't know when there's no property owners usually there when somebody comes in like that, they've got property owners that are in that area that have expressed an opinion in the form of a letter or something like that. Have you had any comments there with the property owner?
I spoke with, I built the subdivision, so I'm familiar and friendly with all the homeowners. And most of the homeowners, we had a clearing limit imposed on us in our subdivision, so I wasn't allowed to remove trees, and we had to preserve trees. The last house just closed on Wednesday, I mean, Tuesday, but every homeowner came in and took out like at least 10 to 15 trees behind their property. One neighbor took out probably 40 trees. I mean, and none of them are in favor of street trees because they're worried, you know, well, let me put it this way, when the town came and marked where they wanted the street trees, because of the layout of the subdivision and the landscaping which I put in the homes, the trees that they were putting in were in front of, you know, specimen trees. The houses have, you know, trees in front of their entire property. They were landscaped very nicely. So every tree that the town wanted to put in as street trees would be in front of trees that were put in for landscaping. And I spoke to each one of the neighbors, and each one of the neighbors said, listen, we really are not going to object to you asking for a waiver because we like it the way it is. I mean, we don't have sidewalks there, and each of the homes, if you've been in there, I mean, we don't have sidewalks there, and each of the homes, if you've been in there, have trees. The backyards were heavily wooded. I sold the last house, which was Number 10 Darre Court, and the man has a half acre of trees, and he told me he's taking out every single one of the trees. The neighbors don't want any more trees.
That's the point I'm trying to make. The point I'm trying to make is that if the owners of the property have no interest in the trees, that has a bearing on what our decision is, whether there should be trees put in or not.
I spoke with Mr. Martin, who lives at 8 Darre Court, and he said to me that he has evergreens and other landscaping in the front, and he did not wish to have any new trees put in the property. The new buyer, Mr. Nappi, who bought Number 10, specifically requested no additional trees, and he put in extensive landscaping as part of his purchase package. And he said he did not want to have street trees added. The house at the end of the cul-de-sac with the bricks has about 20 feet of frontage, and they have a street light on it. I did not speak with them. The Pombo's built the brick house, which they've, the Pombo's. I spoke with both Mr. and Mrs. Pombo before coming here, and they said they've extensively landscaped their property the way they wanted it, and they did not feel that having trees planted in front of their trees would make their property any more valuable. I spoke to the couple that bought House Number 4. I can't think of the name, and I apologize. Rosario, oh, I'm sorry, the name. They have a three-car garage, and they have trees in front of their house. They took out substantial trees behind their house. They specifically said they were not interested in having new trees. They saw where the town marked where the new trees were. They said, why do we need trees in front of our trees? And the corner house, the people have put in extensive landscaping, and they also said that they were not interested in it. And I know that the town has now come down from 26 to 14 trees. I think that's what the recommendation was. And certainly Nichols Road does not require any more trees. I mean, Nichols Road is heavily wooded along the perimeter of the property.
It's not a question there, sir, of whether there should be more trees. The question is, from the standpoint of the original recommendation, there's been a recommendation for a certain amount of trees there by the planning department. And what we'll do is we'll go out and we'll do an onsite, but we want to be sure that when we see it, what it looks like, okay?
I have no problem with that, and I would also have no problem paying the town a fee in lieu of the 14 trees if the board could accept that, if I could save them the time of going there. Because I know the bond put a cost on each tree, and I would certainly take the 14 trees and multiply that amount and pay the amount.
It would be nice, it would be nice, if you could, to get just a note from your, from the people that are there that they don't want any additional trees in their property, because that has a bearing also.
Are you suggesting we adjourn it until I can bring in a note? Do I need an affidavit?
Well, we're going to go look at it anyway.
We're going to do an onsite.
So you'll notify me of the adjourn date?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I couldn't ask for more.
Okay.
If you do the onsite, I'll still bring in, I'll still get the letter.
Any other questions by the board? A motion for an onsite.
In the matter of Winston's Run at Wisconsin, Number 1092, motion to adjourn for an onsite inspection.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you very much. Have a nice
You're welcome. We got the minutes from the conservation board. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.